Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April, uh, April, how about August 22nd Board Meeting. Mr. Calavano.
Roll call. Mr. Charles?
Present.
Mrs. Lab?
Present.
Ms. Mordecai?
Present.
Mr. Robertson?
Present.
Ms. Schwartzbauer?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of meeting, please take notice. The adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 5th, 2016. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of July 27th, 2016?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My wolf steed, I was not here. Mr. Calavano?
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke, Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you. So we're gonna start tonight with the required harassment intimidation and bullying report from January through June. I've indicated this in your packet. And I just want to begin, I'll just go down through and I'll indicate the number of incidents for each school and the number that were found to be HIB. 2015, 16, Gregory had 21, two to be found HIB. Hazel, six, three to be found HIB. Mount Pleasant, 12, nine to be found HIB. Pleasantdale, known as Kelly now, seven, one to be HIB. Redwood, six, two to be HIB. St. Cloud, 16, one to be HIB. Washington, 13, three to be HIB. Edison, four, one to be HIB. Liberty, 20, 12 to be HIB. Roosevelt, one, no HIB. West Orange High School, 11, three to be eight, be found HIB. Incidents reported, there was a total of 117, found to be HIB, 37. So, at this time, what I'd really like to do is to just make a kind of a statement that it's hard to determine why certain numbers go up, certain numbers go down, and I don't believe there is a strategic reason why sometimes it's logic about certain individual students, training, different programs within schools, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that go on. And one of the things I want to remind everyone of is the fact that the safety team in each building looks at the number of incidences as well as the found that HIB, and they are to gear all of their trainings around what they have found. So, for instance, if there's a lot of incidents happening at lunchtime, they are to work at how they can try to reduce that and determine what's causing all of those incidents to be happening at lunchtime. So, programs, meeting with kids, talking to kids, maybe changing how playground rules are being implemented, so on and so forth. So that's part of what the safety team does, and there is a safety team in every single building that does this. So, at this time, I'll just open it up for any questions that the board might have on the HIB report.
First, Mr. Rutzke, I'll just ask you, what is the composition of the safety team? Who's on there?
Safety teams are usually made up, and again, it varies based on the level, whether it be elementary, middle, or high, but there's clearly a building administrator, you have teachers on there, counselors, child study team members, parents, sometimes community members, et cetera. So it's a fairly broad group that makes up that safety team.
Thank you. Mr. Charles?
Just a quick comment. In terms of the West Orange High School, for our high school aisle size, to have only three incidents found to be truly HIB, I think that's, that is a remarkable testament to the staff, to the teachers, the administrators, and the kids in general, too. So, I just want to make that comment. As far as the report, otherwise, it looks good to me. Thank you for working on this, and your staff, Mr. Rutzke.
Thank you. Ms. Mordecai, any questions?
I echo Mr. Charles' statement, but I also would like to add that I'm quite surprised that the middle school has more cases reported than the high school, just by the sheer numbers, you know, of students.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, the one advantage that the high school has is the kind of discipline that they can impose. There's things that they can do at the high school that they cannot do at the middle schools. And, not that that's a deterrent, but sometimes it is. And, they, you know, they do a really good job here, counselors, and, you know, they really work with the kids and understand. And, you have the deans, the administration, you know, everybody who's trying to get kids to understand about being respectful to each other. So, you just, again, it's, you can't really compare anybody or anything, or year after year, because you're talking about a different group of kids.
I understand. So are there any strategies that the high school can share with the other schools?
Well, again, the safety teams talk, and they kind of, you know, decide what's happening in one building, what kind of training are they doing, what kind of, you know, programs are they offering. But, you know, what happens in high schools, they, the high schools around the county talk to each other about things, and what are you doing, and, well, this is really great, and the kids received this really well, or the staff really liked this. And they kind of do that. So, middle's a little bit different animal than the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Just to piggyback on Ms. Mordecai's point, I think the maturity level of our students, there's a great difference between middle school and high school. And, you know, middle school kids are kind of feeling their oats, and by high school, they're almost people. I mean, I just think they've calmed down and things are a little bit better. So, just my own experience with my children, my 13-year-old son versus when he was 18, there's a world of difference. Mr. Schwartzbauer, any comments?
I would like to comment that on the middle school versus last year, it declined. Last year, there were 42 incidents, and this year, there were only 25 in all the middle schools. So, it's a testament, again, to the staff, as you indicated, Jeff, that it's very, very difficult to explain why something happened. And the other comment that I'd like to commend the staff is that all the incidences that were reported were all addressed within the required time of 10 days.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I just want to say that I think that, as I look at the two highest numbers, one was elementary, one was middle school. And to Ms. Lab's point, that's developmental maturation versus high school, in addition to the high school having a different disciplinary structure. But, overall, 37 incidents for, you know, roughly 7,000 kids is, is very, very small. It's a testament to what all of our teachers are doing, our building administrators, our counselors, it's a job well done. And an increase of only seven over 2014 to 15 is also statistically negligible, given the size of the student body. So, well done. Well done.
Thank you. Mr. Rutzke.
Okay. Next, on the opening of schools, just some information to share. Obviously, I hope everybody knows that the first day of school is Tuesday, September 6th, day after Labor Day. All the bus passes are being mailed by this coming Wednesday, two days from now. Now, what's important to note is some receive them today, they went out, some will receive them tomorrow, and some will receive them Wednesday. And it's important, now, that's for our in-district students. For our out-of-district students, students who go into schools outside of our schools in West Orange, the letter is coming from the Sussex Co-op by Monday, August 29th. And what the letter will indicate is the bus company who is handling their child's route and the school that they're attending. So, for instance, it might be mayor that's handling taking a child to Calais School. So that's what will be indicated in the letter. Following that, the company who's hired to transport the student will contact the parent. And, and we just had a conversation today with, we had a transportation meeting today. And what's interesting is that if the out-of-district bus company does not confirm by Wednesday, August 31st, I'm please asking all of the parents who didn't hear on Thursday morning to please call Mr. D'Angelo. And, and again, this will be on the website tomorrow morning to make sure that we'll give the specific number to call, because we want to make sure the parents know on Thursday, at the latest, Friday morning obviously would be the very latest, of who's handling the run and what time the child's being picked up, what time they're going to be dropped off at home after the school day is over. Now, continuing on with the buses, we are, I had a conversation with a gentleman who runs the ESC, which are busing company, and he said, "We've been in district, this is our 20th year, that this year, they are far ahead of anything they've ever done in 20 years. They are more prepared, and they are very comfortable with the start of the school." They've already done the runs once. They started August 8th, and they actually finished today. So, two weeks of runs, and they will do the final run on August 31st. In preparation, they will actually go and stop at each stop, see exactly how long it takes, making sure that we're, if we need to adjust a few time slots, we can do that. But they really are in very good shape with the busing. I'm anticipating a very good opening with the busing. But I'd like to remind everyone that we bus just under 5,000 students. And the first couple of days, if the bus is a few minutes late or the bus is a few minutes early, just be patient with us for the first couple of days. What we need to hear is if the bus does not show up. And it's important that the kids are out there at least 10 minutes early on, on each day, and they, you know, if the weather's bad, whatever, they can't stand inside the house, they need to be out at the bus stop. So, you know, if there's anything that's needed, the information will be right on the website, how to get ahold of the Transportation Department and Mr. D'Angelo for that first week of school. But we are really anticipating a very smooth opening, and I, and I hope that all the work that Mr. D'Angelo and his staff have put in pays off, as we know we've had some issues in the past with our transportation, and certainly that first week of school. Also, on an update, we-
Mr. Rutzke?
Sure.
Regarding the bussing, does all the buses have, do all the buses have GPSs now? Did he say that?
Not all of them. Most of them do at this point, and it's going to be required, so eventually they will have it in there. Okay?
Thank you.
The school supply list is on the website. I've learned that we have a couple, we have one school that there's a couple grades that are not listed. We need to make sure that is fixed. And I learned about that. We'll make sure that's taken care of first thing tomorrow morning. All of the middle school schedules and teacher assignments for the elementary students are being mailed on Friday, August 26th, which is this coming Friday. So you'll have those assignments early next week to the middle of next week. Our back-to-school night dates are listed on the website, right on the page, the homepage, so please look at that back-to-school night date, get that on your calendar so you can show up to your child's classroom and learn what's happening. We also were looking at our blue card situation. We have a resolution that's going to help the parents as far as filling out the blue card. We've been working with two different programs we have in the district, our Power School program and our SNAP program. The SNAP program is what the nurses use, and that's where they pull a lot of the information from, as far as when there is an issue with the nurse. But the two will talk to each other, and we're able to print out basically the blue card and able to send that home with the parent, with a cover letter indicating whether there are changes to that information or not. And we will have a little box on the bottom of the, the printout, and all the parent has to do is check the box, which means there are no changes to the information. If there is changes, or, excuse me, if there is, changes needed, then they will go ahead and make those changes themselves in Power School, and we will go ahead and provide the instructions for them to do it. They will all come back to the administrative assistant in the main office. They'll, they'll go through the homeroom teacher and end up in the main office, and then that individual will go in and make those adjustments to make sure they are accurate, and then have the cards for the nurse and the coaches, as all the coaches need to have the blue cards, the most dated information, to have them with them when they're coaching, whether they're out in the field or in the court, whatever it might be. So, we're going to be sending that home on the first day with all the other information that goes home on the first day, and we're hoping it doesn't get lost. In this first year of implementation, we're going to be very patient and try to work through the process and help as many as we can. We, it may take a little longer, because people are used to a blue card, so we're gonna do the best we can and explain to them. But I think, for the most part, and it's funny, because some parents have said to me, "I filled out the blue card for all three of my kids for many, many years, and there hasn't been one change in the entire time I've been in the district." Those individuals are going to be very happy to put a little check mark at the bottom and move on.
Thank you.
So, and then the last thing-
Long time in common.
Yeah, the last thing is the elementary and Edison Chromebooks. They are going to be finalized. Everything is, is in the carts they're in, they're all being programmed, and they should be ready by the middle to the end of this week. So, we're excited. We want to make sure the elementary is getting what they need. The K-2, as we talked about many times, they're going to have computers that are hardwired in their classroom, as well as one cart that they can share amongst the grade level when they choose to have everyone in their class have a computer. So, the wire, the direct wiring in the class will allow for the teachers to use it as a, as a station, as a center, and save a lot of time by not having to walk down the hallway and line kids up and get them signed on, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of time that we believe will be saved instructionally that can, can really benefit those K through 2 classes. So, we're moving forward. We don't want to delay the process with the technology. The other piece is, the, the new staff orientation was last week, received really nice feedback on how well it went from them, and some good suggestions for the following year. But they all picked up their new laptop as new teachers, and then the elementary teachers will have the opportunity to pick up their laptops next week if they choose to come and pick it up. Otherwise, they will get it on the first day or the first few days of school. All right? That's all I have.
Mr. Rutzke, can you explain the rationale as to why the class lists are not presented to the parents until the end of August?
Sure. It's really a very simple answer. It's because kids continue to register, and we continue to make sure that classes are balanced. Let's take a simple, let's take a grade, like third grade, in the sense that we look at several different criteria to try to make sure classes are balanced as far as gender, ethnicity. We, we want to make sure that we're not having, where we have a BS, we have four or five BSA students, that they're not all in the same, that they're spread across. So we look at a lot of different criteria when it comes to separating kids. And when new kids move in, two or three kids could completely upset that balance. So we wait until, and that's why they're going on on Friday, obviously, we know parents want to get them, and students want to know what their assignments are, et cetera. But we try to make sure we leave it as balanced as we can without, with leaving enough time for the parents to get their assignments.
Our registration office, are they still busy with new registrations?
Yeah, they're very busy. And unfortunately, people are waiting to the end of the summer to come in and register kids, and that's unfortunate. We try to communicate to them to get in there as soon as possible, but it is happening. And, you know, there, I think the other day, they had 50 appointments. So, it's hopping. It's, all three are very busy all day long, and, you know, we're registering kids as we need to.
And I just want to comment, you had requested that if a bus does not come, for the parents to please call you, or Mr. D'Angelo.
No, not call me.
Not you, Mr. D'Angelo. I don't think you have to request it. I think that's-
No, I think they will call, yes. But we, we really are optimistic that, we, we really feel, based on the planning, it's happens from, from August of last year. If you remember, Mr. D'Angelo did not start. He got in very, very late, and he had to kind of pick up the pieces and, and fix some serious problems. He has done a phenomenal job, and, and I really do anticipate a good opening as far as transportation. And, and I, again, I just need people to be patient those first couple of days, five or 10 minutes either way, traffic and rain and whatever it is. You know, we do these runs, and we try to anticipate how long it's gonna take, but, you know, there may be cars in front of them that slow the buses down, et cetera. And when you're talking about being at the end of a run, that could be a five or 10-minute delay. So, we're, we're going to do the very best we can to make sure the kids are picked up, and we say they're gonna be picked up. And it's, it's just important for everybody to be a little flexible those first couple of days.
Also, just one other question. There's been some concern about the presentation to the parents of school supplies, and it seems to be a little inconsistent. Some schools give them out at the end of the school year, others do not. Can you explain what's going on?
Yeah, we're going to look into that tomorrow morning, make sure that that is all clarified. I was under the impression that they were all on the website. The K through 5 expectations were there. As far as school supplies, I've learned that that may not be true for one building, so I'm gonna look into that, and we need to communicate that well to that building so they're prepared.
So your goal is to have that information out there at the end of the school year, at the beginning of the summer, when?
No, no. Yeah, no, it would be available for parents at the end of the year, but most importantly, in the summertime. Most parents, you know, are out shopping a week ago to, you know, till now. So, having it up there in July, for those that want to get an early start on it. But it really starts at the end of the year, where you're asking the teachers in that grade level, you know, what is it that you need to be purchased for the school year. So that has to be done in June in preparation for the kids and the staff leaving.
And let me just ask you, with the introduction of departmentalization in the elementary schools, is that going to affect the request for supplies in any way?
Not really. You know, you still need those basic things, and departmentalization's not gonna change a lot of that.
Okay, just repeating what I've heard. Thank you. Any other questions from the board on the superintendent's report as of now?
Suggestion, make sure that everything gets post, posted on all the social media sites.
Yes. Okay. We actually, we had a meeting today, Mr. Schwartzbauer, with all the administrators, and we, we had Perry and Cynthia come in and talk to them, and really try to, you know, there's a lot of great things that go on that are not being publicized, and it's a simple way with social media, just to put it up there so everybody knows what's going on. So, we're really making a conscious effort. But simple things like what you're talking about, absolutely, that needs to happen.
First, I just wanted to applaud all the, the, the technology implementation that that's going on. You know, the job Mr. D'Angelo's doing on the buses, and then just a lot of positive things happening. On the blue cards, I'm ecstatic, because we, not only do you have to fill out the same information per child, but you may actually have one for each sport in addition to the beginning of the year. One question of the blue cards, is it possible to also make that update digital, where they could simply have it posted online, and you can just fill in the change online or check no change at some point?
Yeah, the, the only thing that parents are not allowed to change is their address. It has to come through the registration office.
Bureau's office, absolutely.
Because there's documentation that has to be confirmed.
Yep.
But, you know, the phone numbers and things like that, yes, they can do that. They can go right into Power School and do that. We're gonna send that information home, so those that don't know how to do it, we're gonna make it simple for them to go ahead and follow the steps.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Oh, Sandy?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work to both you and the administration. And I'm also excited about the blue cards. It's too late for my children, but I'm happy for everyone who's had to fill out a blue card for every sport, for every semester, for each child. Painful. Thank you.
Continuing on with the superintendent's report.
Okay, I just want to give an update on Gregory. Gregory in specific to the construction project that is going on. We, this week, we have the, the pavement has been laid, the McAdam has been laid, and we're hoping that tomorrow or Wednesday, the striping is actually taking place. There's some simple things, like putting the, the flagpole in. We have to put the, the base of the flagpole in first, and then obviously the flagpole finishes, or goes behind that. We have to handle a couple things with the sidewalk and some pavers. We need to make sure we have the signage for the new kiss and go up on Lowell Avenue. And, and so, simple little things, the lighting for the parking lot, PSE&amp;G. We're doing some work with PSE&amp;G to make sure that's getting squared away. But, overall, we're excited that we are, you know, at the August 22nd deadline, and we still have, you know, over two weeks of school. And, and really, if we needed to, people could pull in and use the bus turn and, and the parking lot the end of this week. So that was the goal, to give us some, some time if we need to do any final adjustments or anything. The shrubs and the trees, or the one tree that will be planted, that won't happen until the latter part of September, October, when the weather's better, the planting is, is a better time at that point. But Ms. Thompson is sending out a one-page letter about the kiss and go to remind everybody what the procedures are for an effective kiss and go, making sure that the kids have their, their backpacks and, and all of their materials with them within the car. They get out, kiss, boom, they're gone, they're out the door, they're on the curb side getting out, not on the inside, the traffic side getting out. So we're gonna go through all that, and Ms. Thompson and two other staff members will be up there, making sure that it is smooth, and helping everybody understand effective kiss and go. The police are going to be assisting us. We'll be looking at the different pieces for the bus cutout to make sure that goes smoothly as well. So there's a lot of things that are going to be changing at Gregory, but I think they're all for the good. So we're in really good shape here with the construction update, and we'll be ready to go for the first day of school. The other piece is, last meeting, we discussed the district goals, and there were some, you had some, a few suggestions. So what I want to do is read the district goal based on your suggestions, and then we'll need to talk about the board goals. So the first district goal is to prioritize, communicate, and implement the five-year strategic plan in order to incrementally improve student achievement each year and ensure the efficient operation of the district. The second goal is to evaluate the Special Education Department pre-K through 12 by analyzing the current programs, methodology, staffing, and communication plans in order to comply with federal and state guidelines and meet the individual and specific needs of our students. And the third and final goal is to evaluate the Guidance Department pre-K through 12 by analyzing the current programs, support, staffing, and services that would align the preparation of our students to our college and career readiness goals. So those are three goals that we have recommended for approval tonight. And with that, we now need to, we discussed the board goals last meeting, but now we need to finalize those. So let me turn that back over to you, Ms. Lab.
Thank you very much. Okay, the board goals this year, just we, I'll read one off, I'll go through the line. If there's any comments or concerns from my colleagues, we'll address it at that point. First board goal is to finalize and complete all collective bargaining agreements. Mr. Schwartzbauer, you good?
I'm good.
Mr. Robertson?
You bet.
Mr. Charles?
I'm good.
Ms. Mordecai?
I'm good.
Okay. Second goal this year will be to, hmm, to conduct a district demographic study in order to analyze and evaluate school enrollment in relation to school building capacity. Mr. Schwartzbauer?
I'm good.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm good.
Mr. Charles?
Good.
Ms. Mordecai?
I'm good.
Okay. Third board goal for this school year, to be fiscally, oh, where did I write? Hold on, my writing is like a chicken scratch here. To provide strong, stable, and prudent fiscal management that seeks efficiencies and maximizes resources. Mr. Schwartzbauer?
I'm good with it.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, good.
Mr. Charles?
Yes, I'm good.
Ms. Mordecai?
I'm good, thank you.
We're good. Okay, move on.
Okay, so we'll have those both approved as we move through the agenda. And the last piece is for the strategic plan, we will have the presentation on the strategic plan at the September 26th board meeting. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rutzke. At this time, are there any questions from the public on agenda items only? If so, please come up to the board, to the podium, announce your name and address, and we will give you three minutes.
Hi, Sue Freeval, Ten Ridge Ave. Tonight, the board will have the second reading of a proposed revised visitors policy. The reason for revising the policy is that the superintendent was violating the current policy. Specifically, in some cases, parents shared with the board that observations of their child's classroom, which they had requested and were granted in IEP meetings, and which had been scheduled, were then rejected and canceled by Mr. Rutzke. This, as those who know the Little Blue Book, or should be aware, violates the law. In other cases, parents requested to, to observe their child's classroom in IEP meetings, and they were told that this decision could not be made by the team, because there was now an unwritten procedure, and the parents would have to send that request to the superintendent for approval or refusal. This also violates the law, because it removes the IEP team's authority by subjecting requests made in IEP meetings to approval of the superintendent outside the meeting. When these refusals were brought up here in public meetings- When these refusals were brought up here in public meetings, twice the superintendent indicated that he was, in fact, not going to allow strangers, which he said included parents of children in the class, to visit their own spec ed child's classroom. This, as I pointed out, was also in violation of the board's own visitors policy. The response of the board was to suggest that perhaps the policy needed to be more specific and should be revisited. This in no way addressed the concerns of the parents or the violations. The proposed policy simply seems to be making Mr. Rutzke's unwritten procedure into literal written policy. I think it sends a bad message to parents in the public that when parents point out that a superintendent is violating a law or a board policy, especially in such a way that it made it harder for them to make informed decisions about their child's education, the board's only response is to change the policy to fit the superintendent's practices. However, since I only have three minutes, what is most relevant tonight is that the original policy was a general visitor policy and did not directly address or mention special education or IEPs or the director's special services. This proposed policy does, and because of that and the procedure it will require, this policy will be in conflict with state and federal law. I assume the board did not realize this when you wrote it, but I'm pointing it out to you now. On top of that, I would remind you all of the code of ethics for school board members by which you are all bound. Point C reads, "I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal and will help frame those policies and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them." Has the board consulted with those who will be affected by this policy? Have you consulted with parents of both general education and special education students about this policy? Especially since under this wording, even general ed parents will have to submit a request to the director of special services. And in the absence of a board council, who did you consult about the legality of this policy? Because the Little Blue Book, that is the law, and this policy are definitely in conflict. I respectfully ask that you do not approve this policy until you can fill your ethical obligation to consult with those who will be affected by it and to get better guidance on the legality of this policy as written. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public this evening on anything on the agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Rutzke, would you like to start?
Sure, as we have indicated in numerous meetings, obviously, there was no violation. Cancelled by Mr. Rutzke is completely inaccurate. There are conversations that come to me that I have with, whether it be the director of special services or principals, the child study team members report to both of those individuals and then we have a conversation. It does not violate the law. We do not refuse unless there's a reason to refuse. And as I said numerous times, plenty of parents visited classrooms during the 15, 16 school year. As far as the policy being in conflict with state and federal law, there were attorneys, there are people who write policy that have indicated the policy is absolutely fine. We have the right to have information submitted to anybody. Anybody is a designee in the district. If that's a special ed director who we designate letters to go to, that is absolutely permissible. It's also permissible to have it to the principal. We can designate anybody we'd like to. Just because a person has a title of director of special services does not mean that she cannot handle other situations. For instance, whether somebody should be going into the classroom or not. So the policy is clearly not directed just towards special ed parents or students. It is a policy for visitors.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke. Any other comments? Okay.
Hold on, yes.
Okay.
I just would like to reiterate that the policy was reviewed by outside counsel and we specifically asked for it. While we respect your opinion, counsel has advised us that the policy meets all the requirements and as such, we are in compliance with it.
Mr. Charles?
Mr. Rutzke, if the visit is denied, does the parents receive the decision in writing? Or is it communicated to them by phone call?
Usually, it's just a phone call.
And, I'm sorry.
Just to also note that the policy was also reviewed in conjunction, not only with counsel but with the New Jersey School Board Association. And this has been reviewed by the board, by the attorneys, by the NJSBA in tremendous detail and, you know, it's a well-written policy.
Actually, we were praised by New Jersey School Board Association for creating such an inclusive policy. It's basically a hybrid of Strauss Esme, which does a policy for many of the districts. Those who don't actually utilize New Jersey School Board Association, there are two companies, if you will, that draft policy. And this is a hybrid of both of them. And again, counsel was brought in numerous times and different counsel as well. Moving forward. I'm sorry.
I just want to add that in addition to what my colleagues have said, myself and my colleagues researched other districts to look at their policies. I pulled Livingston, Basking Ridge, you know, other districts to compare with ours. And I forget the other districts that my colleagues looked at, but we looked at many other visitor policies from Blend Ridge.
Across the state, Little Silver, I mean, there's a lot.
Across Mars and Essex County.
Quite a few, actually.
Yeah, quite a few.
Yes. Okay, let's move forward. First reading of the following policy. Let's go. May I have a motion for attendance, absences, and excuses, 5113?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Just a brief synopsis, since this is the first reading of the policy. There's minor language changing in here, changes that reference the change from CUSAC to the New Jersey Department of Education. We are now defining and clarifying criteria and procedures for excused and unexcused absences, tardiness, truancy, late arrival, and early dismissal of students. And also, the board would like to thank Dr. Kelly, he's our school physician, for his recommendations on the medically excused absence guidelines. The interesting thing that I found when going over this policy, the state gives us a very short list of excused absences. There are religious holidays, there are visits to colleges and quarantine.
Taking the child to work.
And take your child to work day, which is a very short list. It was interesting because I met with Myla Jacy, who represents the 27th Legislative District. I represented on behalf of school boards. And the discussion was, when a student is suspended by the district, so basically, we maintain order in our house, that is not an excused absence for the state. The district does have the authority to make an excused absence for the district, but the state has not recognized school suspensions as an excused absence. And Ms. Jacy, as a former school board member from Maplewood-South Orange, she also concurred that that is an interesting position to take. So she will be taking that. She heads, Sandy, the college advisory board?
Yes.
For the assembly? But obviously, she has a lot of influence on the assembly committee that deals with K through 12. But again, it was just an interesting sidebar when we were going over, what is an excused absence by the state?
I just have one comment, President Lab. The second sentence on page one of the policy, where it says 90%. I know in the, I guess, last summer, we were discussing whether or not our funding was going to be tied to whether or not we had 95% attendance. It's curious that they have 90% listed here when Governor Christie was tying our funding to 95% attendance. So if you could please just clarify that with the New Jersey school boards when you do your due diligence.
Actually, I think, Mr. Rutzke?
Yeah, I can clarify. It is, the law is 90%. The state expects every district to have 90% attendance rate, which means they look at individual buildings and they look at you as a district. And you have to have 90% or above in both of those categories. We worked really well last year. The administrators and the teachers worked really hard on making sure kids were coming to school and when they were not, really sitting down with them, really sitting with parents. And our attendance for last year increased and improved. So we're happy with that. The guidance council did a really nice job, as well as the child study team. So really good work done by them, but it is 90%.
I'm not tied to the funding.
Correct, it's not tied to the funding, you're correct.
Mr. Calabano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes, to approve.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes, to approve.
And President Lab?
Yes.
May I have a motion for visitors policy 1250 on second reading?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion from the board? Well, actually, let me just go over once again what is going on with the change of this policy. We are clarifying that first, in creating a definition of a visitor, which is directly from School Board Association. We are confirming the parameters and rationales to visit. We have confirmed and established protocol for scheduling a visit. We are putting in language regarding the banning of recording devices and discussion recourse for breaches of confidentiality information. Additionally, there will be a process now established for following up, follow-up questions from the visitor to the administration. Questions from the board, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
No, I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
In regard to, from what we've been, heard that in prior instances, people have recorded.
Yes.
And recorded, which is really in violation of confidentiality and is really very, very important that people understand, that parents understand while they're observing their own children, which is very, very important, confidentiality about other children are just as important. And I think the policy addresses it.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
You know, I'm very proud of the work the administration, legal counsel, and our board has done in developing this policy. I think it's a very solid policy. My only concern to the policy has to do with the 10-day period that is advanced notice that is required. And while I understand that it may not end up being 10 days and I also understand that there are other factors involved. Lesson plans, for instance, need to be finalized, submitted a week in advance. And I also understand that child, the schedules for child study team members, their availability needs to be taken into account. My concern with the 10 school days or two weeks as an advanced notice is that if a child is having great difficulty in a class and this represents a change in behavior, change in that child's experience, or if a child is literally in crisis in the class and while there are other emergent procedures that are in place, or if a child is transitioning, and a transition we know can cause decompensation in some kids. If, under those circumstances, I would like to see a five- or six-day advanced notice, which allows still time for the lesson plan to be changed if it's necessary. Because lesson plans aren't always required to be changed simply because of an observation or a visit. So that would be my only comment on the policy, that I'd be more comfortable with a five- or six-day period versus a 10-school day or two-week period.
Okay. Mr. Charles, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, if a child is in a crisis or an emergency, there are procedures or a mechanism in place that would allow for a visit or some kind of therapy session or intervention? Is that correct?
If a child was in crisis, you can call an emergency IEP meeting at any time. And you can address what that crisis is, which could be multiple things. And the issue at that point, when you have, and again, when I'm talking about emergency meeting, that could be the next day. And at that point, part of that discussion could be that the parent goes in and looks at a possible new placement for the child or whatever it might be. So, but again, a crisis situation is not a typical visit. And the idea behind this is that maybe it's a gen ed student, maybe it's a special ed student. It all depends on the situation with the child.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mordecai? Any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add, when our students, when our parents sign off on a release for students to be photographed, videotaped, this does not include a visitor to the classroom videotaping the classroom settings of their child. But of course, the other children in the classroom are included in the pictures, the videotapes. So I'm sure that a parent release does not cover this situation.
It does not, and if you notice in, let me just find it for you.
Because that's been raised to me by members of the public, that a release is signed off and, you know, sure, you can go in and take pictures or videotape.
No, absolutely not.
But it violates the privacy of the other students in the class.
It does, and if you look at the second paragraph on the second page, the last sentence, during the observation time, no recording devices are permissible. No, nobody is permitted to have one in there.
And additionally, in the last, the third paragraph, last sentence, "Visitors who improperly leak information may be personally liable for damages and shall not be entitled to indemnification for actions brought against them by third parties." I just wanted to respond to Mr. Robertson's concerns about getting into the classroom, you know, the five and six days. One of my concerns is the child study team members, in addition to meeting with everybody in the world about meetings and stuff like that, they're conducting therapies. And you have group therapies, you have individual therapies. Children are entitled to those therapies as per their IEP. So if you're pulling out a child study team member to go with a parent to an observation, those other children, their schedules are affected. Then we're getting into the world of retroactive therapies and things like that. So again, I think a timely, sensitive timeframe is, it's okay. I mean, this is across the state, 10 days is the norm. Is that correct, Mr. Rutzke?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Calabano, vote on the first visitors policy, please.
We're doing each one separately?
Yeah, we're doing each separately tonight.
Mr. Charles? Yes. Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
I'll vote yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay. District, may I have a motion for district records and reports 3570?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
I don't know who, okay, your call.
Ronnie.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll let you on the next one. Very, very minor changes from school boards on this policy. Just changing the language that had previously been New Jersey Division of Archives and Records is now the New Jersey Department of Treasury, comma, Division of Revenue and Enterprise Service Records Management Services. That is a mouthful. There is also language in there that has absolutely no application to our district but is required to be in here, talking of districts of enrollments of less than 500. Any comments from the board on 3570? Mr. Schwartzbaum?
My only comment is that we should, we as a district prospectively should try to scan documents and make them electronically available so therefore, we can alleviate paper and savings on a long-term basis.
Just as an aside, in special education, you're required by law to keep records 100 years. How crazy is that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Robertson, any comments?
I am aware that we are actually scanning and storing on, in cloud, using cloud services, correct? I do have a question in regard to keeping records for 100 years. Is it required that those records be hard copy versus a digital copy? And what is the strict requirement required in regard to hard copy versus digital copy? Because this could not only save space, it could save space, money, time for management, all sorts of things.
Yeah, the state has changed. About three to four years ago, they understood that there's so much paper at schools accumulate. They went ahead and understood that. They used to make, if you were going to scan it and save it electronically, you still needed to have a hard copy of it. And we were going back and saying, this is ridiculous, we're just doing double work. So they now have changed and scanning, saving, as long as you and I've spoken about, you have to have two forms of backup.
Right.
So we have that and we're working, we're starting with our special education department and moving into our human resource department next. It is an expensive endeavor, but it absolutely needs to be done.
Thank you.
Mr. Charles?
Oh, I have nothing.
Ms. Mordecai?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Calabano?
Mr. Charles? Yes. Ms. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion for second reading for expenses and reimbursement 9250?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Again, minor changes. School boards is adding the language in there to be inclusive of trustees. Some of the boards have trustees as opposed to members. And there's a note of change of the Department of Treasury OMB circular form A-87 to 16-11-OMB. And that's all the change on this one. Any discussion from the board on this?
Not on this specifically, as we looked. As we look, I do have a comment about, as we're looking at all the policies. As we implement a policy, if we are to receive, if we receive feedback from administrators, from parents, et cetera, that indicate that a policy in its current form is not as effective as it could be, or maybe not meeting all the needs that it should, that's an opportunity for us to revisit it, whether that be the visitors' policy, et cetera. So people will need to provide feedback as policy is being implemented.
Yes. And just so you're aware, when policies are presented to us from school boards, they have a little cheat sheet each month with what's being updated and stuff like that. What Mr. Rutske and I do is that we address, or Mr. Rutske, contacts, if it's appropriate, the personnel who would be involved in that. So if it was something about sports, you know, Mr. Rutske would reach out to either the high school principal, the athletic director.
Right.
If it's about special education, you know, so
Right, right.
We do bring those people in prior to, for their feedback. But again, I hear what you're saying, after it's implemented.
After implementation, right.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Charles?
I have nothing.
I have one thing.
Sandy?
Regarding travel payments, let's see, in the middle of page one. Reimbursements for travel after completion of a travel event? I know from time to time, we've done this, and only because we usually don't have a board meeting at the time someone's traveled. I don't see any leeway in the policy to address that.
Mr. Calavano, you want to comment, please?
Well, the individuals that we put on the agenda after the fact, you'll always see zero cost. So we will allow the person go, but it's on their dime. We will not reimburse. We're not allowed to reimburse after the fact.
Okay.
Mr. Calavano?
Thank you.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. May I have a motion for personnel items 1 through 5 with the addendum?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to announce tonight, actually, one of my dearest friends in the world, Stacy Forte, will be retiring this eve, effective January 1st, 2017. I know, oh, it's sad. Stacy is a sweetheart. She's been in our district for 24.6 years. She and her husband Rick have been rock stars in West Orange. They're still staying, I don't want anybody to think they're going away. But Stacy, I just wish her the very, very best. Also, another retirement, Steve Quirk. Steve has been a custodian at Liberty for the last 10 years, and we'd like to wish him well on his retirement, effective December 1st. Any other comments from the board on personnel items? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes, with one extension, Maxine Heinz James.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
May I have a motion for curriculum and instruction 1 through 4?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comment from the board on curriculum and instruction? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay, finance. May I have a motion for special services 1 through 2 and business office 1 through 15?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, you've been busy. I said, into the school, summer, and get ready for school year thing. I just would like to note that the district will be donating, I believe, 100 chairs to the township, is that, something like that?
100, 200, yep.
A bunch of chairs to the township that we are, no, we're using, but they borrow a lot, so let's give it over. Any other comments from the board on business items tonight?
I just want to comment on page 11, 13. We're finally getting rid of that Cadillac that's been sitting there for 50 years, taking up parking spots, and an eyesore for every athletic event that we have, so I'm glad to see, actually, I'm glad to see it's gone, so.
Got an opinion, Ronnie? Okay. Any other comments from the board on business items this evening?
I would only ask one thing. The public, I doubt that many people in the public, in reference to item number 15, know what is involved with student, with the student growth objectives. And that's one of, that's the highest cost among those line items in that section. And I wondered if Mr. Rutske could just give a top line for the public on what that entails.
Sure, Mr. Robertson. Student growth objectives are part of a requirement that, I'll try not to go into too much depth and bore you with this too much, that it's part of the evaluation for teachers. So teachers who are not in tested grades, meaning grades 3 through 8 for language arts and 3 through 7 for mathematics, they have to conduct, or create two student growth objectives, which they, they're basically goals, they're academic goals for their students in their class, and the teacher's charge is to try and help the students grow with whatever the teacher decides that would be the best use of them growing. So, I'll give you an example, where we're trying to increase the effectiveness of reading, or staying on grade-level reading, or increasing the students in their grade-level reading. That would be an objective, or increasing their ability to do algebra and concepts of algebra, where we're looking at multiple assessments that indicate where the students began and where they ended, and that growth objective was met. So, it's kind of a roundabout answer, but it really is more about student growth and achievement, and it's required by the Department of Education for all teachers. One SGO is required for tested area teachers, and two is required for non-testing.
I just have one thing to say. Mr. Calavano, can you please explain the change order in item number 14 on page 12? The drill construction change order.
Right, it's the bus garage structural walls. So, we filed permits with the township, and the township required signed drawings, so we hired an architect. And going through the architect, he felt that we needed a footing drainage system along the new walls, so that's the additional cost, $11,900. And it's within budget.
Okay, so is it standard procedure to get a signed drawing? Is that, what is extra cost? The cost is for the installing of the footing of the drainage system?
Additional work, for the additional work, yep.
Okay, not for the cost of the architect?
No.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay. Motion for reports?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, new item on here, miscellaneous. How special is that? May I have a motion for miscellaneous items 1 through 3? And just so the public is aware, I'm sorry, miscellaneous item 1 would be the board goals for the upcoming year, number 2 would be the district goals, and number 3, Mr. Calavano, can you just explain a little bit about what that's all about, or Mr. Rutske, either?
Well, with the Affordable Care Act, we have to track employees' hours. So those employees that consistently work 30 hours a week are eligible for health benefits. So we're just approving our measurement period. So the first 12 months, we measure, and then if we, then after the 12 months, we take that information, and they give us two months to analyze employees that are eligible, and then we offer them the benefits for the following year. So those are the three phases that we, you know, our schedule for looking to see who actually should be enrolled into our health plan.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
Motion?
I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I've been up since 4 o'clock in the morning. Go ahead, Ronnie.
If the board goals and district goals are approved, we're going to, I guess, update the website.
Tomorrow. They'll be up tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, I'm sorry, did you have something?
No.
Did I hear something from over here? Was that you?
No, I'm good.
I'm here, I'm sorry, I just
No worries, no worries.
I'm fried. See, anything? Okay.
So can you help me out, who moved and who seconded?
We didn't.
We didn't, I'm tired, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Go for it, Mr. Calavano.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Lab?
Yes.
Okay, report from the board president and board members. First, I just want to mention, tomorrow night, if you have nothing to do with your children, free movie up at Ozpack for the kids at 8:00 PM. I sit on the board for New Jersey Arts Incubator, and offhand, I cannot remember what the name of the movie is, but it's a little, what is it?
The Good Dinosaur.
The Good Dinosaur. Thank you very much, Miss America. I'm sorry. So anyway, if you're looking for something to do tomorrow night with the kids, 8 o'clock up at Ozpack, it's a freebie, and bring your kids, but bring bug spray. I will tell you that right now. Just on behalf of the board, though, I would like to wish everybody a fantastic school year. It's the last couple of weeks, everybody's all excited. I see the lines coming in and out of Staples, and it's that time again. So I will urge our residents to please, please be mindful of the children going to school. They're little, they're short, you're riding in a big truck. Watch out and be careful of the kids. Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
None.
Mr. Robertson?
Nothing.
Nothing.
It's a quiet night here in West Orange. Okay. May I, let's see, have a motion for the next board meeting to be held at 8:00 PM on September 26, 2016, at West Orange High School.
So moved.